Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask for, is there any agenda changes?
Staff have no changes to present to the agenda this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to public forum. I'll open that up at this time. There is nobody in the audience besides the chief of police and the newspaper, so I'm gonna consider that to be, we will not have a public forum this evening. So, I will move on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the bills and payroll, if there are no questions or discussion, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Second. Have the motion and the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That consent agenda is approved. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we'll move right on into new business. And the first item is consideration of 2022 cereal malt beverage licenses. And Ethan will bring us up to date on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Both Jumpstart and then Wedgewood Golf Course have filed cereal malt beverage applications. Jumpstart is for unopened containers to be sold onsite for consumption elsewhere. And then Wedgewood's is for consumption onsite. Wedgewood would be the newer cereal malt beverage for us this year, being that the golf course is now within city limits. But the required paperwork has been filled out and fees have been paid where applicable. So, the final process is for the city council to approve those cereal malt beverage licensing, so that we can get those licensed issued to those retailers.
If there's no discussion, I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of the 2022 cereal malt beverage license to Jumpstart.
Second.
We have the motion and the second to renew the cereal malt beverage license for Jumpstart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That one passes.
Likewise, I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of the 2022 cereal malt beverage license to Wedgewood Golf Course.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve the cereal malt beverage license for the public golf course. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of opioid settlement participation. And Ethan will bring us up to par on that.
In your packet, there is a resolution which would approve staff and the mayor to execute and deliver agreements for the city to participate in the larger opioid settlement between the state of Kansas and manufacturers, or certain manufacturers of opioids. Kansas was part of multi-state litigation, as well as several larger cities in the state had pursued legal action due to the detrimental effects that the opioid epidemic has been shown to have in communities. The state subsequently passed a law in their last term, which basically said if a city has not already started the litigation process, you're barred from doing so, since the state has issued it, or entered into a larger settlement with these pharmaceutical companies. So, the threshold for cities to participate is if your city has costs attributable to substance abuse or addiction mitigation in excess of $500. Speaking with our public safety departments, which would have been the primary ones affected by anything of opioids in the community, they indicated that they believe we met that threshold. So, after speaking with the city attorney, we feel that it's probably in Halsted's best interest to go ahead and participate in this. We don't know at this point how many cities overall are participating, or they're still working out the fine details. So, I can't tell you, you know, what, if any, financial assistance would be coming back to the city of Halsted. But December 30th is the deadline to indicate you want to participate. And you have to submit, you know, waiver of future claims, although again, we can't independently litigate due to HB 2079. So, essentially, if we want any sort of relief or fund coming to our community to help address what we have seen from opioids, from having to, you know, carry Narcan to, you know, Eddie and some of that use, this is our one chance to get into this. So, staff would recommend that we pass the needed resolution and then submit those documents to the attorney general's office to participate.
Sounds good. Any questions, council?
Any available money that would come this way, there's certain limitations as to how it can be expended.
Yeah, the thought, they're still working on the final memorandum of understanding. And I'm gonna guess that that's a document that will come back for the council to get or have to approve before the city would receive any funds through the settlement process. But yeah, those, it's thought that those funds will have to go to some sort of mitigation or be directed towards drug abuse.
Good.
So.
Good question.
Well, Ms. Mayor, if there's no more questions or discussion, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 12272116, a resolution approving the execution and delivery of an agreement to release and assign the city opioid claims to Kansas City General and certifying costs attributed to substance abuse and addiction mitigating in excess of $500.
Second.
We have the motion and the second to approve this resolution for the opioid crisis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of support of League of Kansas Municipalities 2022 Statement of Municipal Policy. It's kind of a mouthful. Let Ethan bring us up to par on that.
Thank you. We sent out in a separate email, just because it's a lengthier document, the League's 2022 Statement of Municipal Policy. We basically just asked that the council authorize staff to participate in activities, like when the league calls for provision of testimony or anything in line with those legislative priorities. One of the League's big functions is advocating on behalf of cities during the legislative session. And since the session gets started in the beginning of January, we were seeking approval now. So, if anything comes up before our first meeting in January, we can hit the ground running. Obviously, if any of you take issue with any of those, or think Halsted would have a different position, please let me know now. But generally, I would say their general priorities, you know, would benefit the city of Halsted. And we try our best to reach out to our local legislators or provide testimony when they ask for it, so.
Any questions, council? We don't require any formal action on anything here, do we, Ethan?
Just a motion to support.
I'd make a motion for the city of Halsted to support the League of Kansas Municipalities 2022 Statement of Municipal Policy and Authorization for Governing Body Members and Staff to engage in activities related to the support of those policies.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to support the League of Kansas Municipalities. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. That carries. Next item on our agenda is consideration of an employee cost of living adjustment. And Ethan will probably bring us up to par on that.
Yeah, so typically, at the last meeting of the year, we consider an across-the-board cost of living adjustment for full-time city employees. This has been a city practice since at least 1999. We typically base that percentage on the Consumer Price Index report, the last one released by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, specifically that CPI for the Midwest region. Typically, you know, we've seen this be at one, you know, or two percent. This year, the Midwest was at 7.3 percent, and just nationwide, it was at 6.8 percent. So, talked with the department heads, and there are several factors. But we're recommending council consider a 7% increase for cost of living. Several reasons for that. One, you know, everyone hopes that this is just kind of a temporary inflationary spike, and the purpose of COLA is not to reduce our employees' purchasing power or their wages due to inflationary pressure. So, if it is, you know, if prices don't come back down and that 7% is gonna be needed to hold true to that policy objective. The other consideration is, you know, we've talked a little bit in the last year, seen some of our larger peer communities in the region do pretty extensive wage reviews and finding out that across the board, you know, the public employers are a little bit behind when it comes to wages. So, if this is a temporary spike, then the 7% would also see us move up. Because I can tell you, you know, that if cities like Newton or Harvey County are behind on their wage scales, then Halsted's gonna fall behind, because I just, we know what our pay scales are in comparison to theirs. And so, this would help move us that direction. We've had, you know, beyond, between the COVID pandemic, just natural tenures of employees. A lot of departments have actually been running short staff this year for one reason or another. So, you know, it's kind of recognition. I know there's been a lot covered as far as the use of ARPA funding to increase, you know, in recognition of what employees have done. And, you know, everyone in the city was deemed essential and required to stay. I'm a bigger proponent of trying to do a larger COLA increase to recognize employees, because that will stay with them. If we use ARPA funds, that's temporary, it's a one-shot. Once that, once that funding would go out, you know, the employees wouldn't get another bonus next year, because ARPA's not available in subsequent years. So, I feel in many respects that while the 7% seems significantly higher than any COLA we've ever brought before the city council in my time with the city, I do believe it's well-deserved by our full-time employees. I think we stand the risk of falling further behind on the wage scale. Or again, if this is not just a temporary inflationary spike, you know, we're gonna permanently decrease that, the value of that take-home pay for our full-time employees by not doing this COLA. This will put, you know, some pressure on the salary lines and the budget compared to what we budgeted for 2022. But met with the management team, and they're all in full support of trying to get this done and making cuts in their budget throughout the year to make sure that this is not something that, you know, just completely turns the 2022 budget upside down in terms of their individual department costs. But they all, they all share in that theory that, you know, everyone's, everyone's worked hard, everyone's put in. You know, we hope, we hope these economic hiccups are just that. But whether they are or they aren't, this is, this is something I think that, you know, is well-deserved by our staff for the work they put in. And it's something I, we believe from a management perspective, we can manage if the council were to approve. But it is subject to your all's final decision, so.
What kind of, did you run the dollars that it would add to that line?
Yeah, so basically, 7% across the board adds about $80,000 in cost.
Eighty thousand?
Eighty thousand between all the departments.
Look at it this way, that's $80,000 payroll that'll add to taxes to budget for federal expenses. Will you, let's see, how do I phrase this? Will you adjust all of the, COLA, cost of living is for employees that are working here now. What about when you're hiring somebody in? Does that apply? Will you increase those starting salaries to the point where it's a recruiting tool?
Yeah, so basically, we, we try and, you know, we use the COLA to inform, like, both our midpoint, which is what Merit's based off of, that all gets adjusted by that COLA at the bare minimum. So, nothing starts to fall behind. You know, we talked in a work session, we're still working through some data now at this point to kind of relook at what wages we're bringing in to start. The big issue there is obviously compression happens when you start to raise the starting salary. So, we're trying to be very thorough before we come back with comprehensive review there.
And recruiting has been a problem to bring people in. So, we need to make sure that we're adequately compensating our employees for the job that they're applying for.
The one question I would have, Ethan, is since we obviously didn't budget for this for 2022, could we potentially use part of those ARPA funds to cover it for the 2022 year? Therefore, we can budget it for '23.
Not across the board, as far as the way I understand the ARPA regulations, because you have to get pretty specific in how that's applying and relating it back to COVID. So, across the board, you know, we would have to, you know, explain why the same increase would apply to someone who was in the office and could potentially work remotely as, say, an EMS, you know, person that had to go out in the field and whatnot. As far as budgeting, we did build in 4%, so of the seven, we'd only actually have to make up 3% as far as.
So, if each department head's trimmed their expenses by 25%, it shouldn't be a problem.
I think, I think police definitely, they stood up and said they would, they would cut as much as possible.
So, that eighty thousand?
No reaction at all.
So, the eighty thousand is the 3%?
No, the eighty is the full seven.
Is the full seven, okay.
We had basically had adjusted, or we had planned for four, which is a combination of both Merit and COLA, so.
I think they raised social security 5.8%. The old people really get hammered every time, you know?
Well, if there's no further questions, I'd make a motion to approve a 7% cost of living increase to base wage for all full-time city employees who are not on a disciplinary probation status effective with the payroll beginning December 18th, 2021.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve the COLA increase for city employees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Ethan and department heads, I'd like to thank you for your efforts on looking at this and coming up with the numbers for us to consider.
And there's no doubt that our staff has, especially some of the senior staff. We know you guys have been shorthanded, and we do expect you to still deliver, and you have been. So, we do appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the 2022 holiday schedule for the city of Halsted.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of an odd one. Normally, we're weird. We had changed to try and keep this from coming back in front of you all with set holidays. Something that got by us, though, was just kind of the unique way that New Year's fell this year, which would either have put an extra holiday in 2021 or make us take kind of an extended in 2022, take that on Monday the 3rd. So, after talking to staff and department heads, they asked if, just one with us being shorthanded and kind of having some immediate things do with the turn of the fiscal year to actually observe the New Year's holiday as a floating holiday in 2022. And then, there was some, there's always been discussion, at least as long as I went to the city, of taking two days at Christmas as a routine, as opposed to just one. You know, we talked about we would need to have another paid day off up then in that case. And then there was discussion of, we're always scrambling to try and find a day to do in-service training as far as our annual insurance meetings, all of our annual trainings that are required. So, as Veterans Day kind of falls right before Thanksgiving, that was suggested of, we would maybe turn that into our in-service day, since historically, the city's been closed on that day. So, staff would still come in, but we would take care of some of the logistical things and still not be open to the public that day. But we would instead take the day off that normally was given with Veterans Day as another day at Christmas. So, basically, that results in 2022 still having the same 11 days off, plus one in-service day, except the big change would be there's two floating holidays, one taken in April, and then one taking at the day after July 4th, which was based on staff input. So, we wanted to bring that to you all, as it's kind of a change from what the personnel policies set as our holiday schedule. But at least for those of us, especially on the admin side, we, January 3rd just wasn't working out to be a good day to try and take off. And then, obviously, half of our staff are shift. So, they may or may not be working on that day regardless, because of their schedules. So, they graciously were like, you know, they didn't care if it was on the 3rd or not. And it was, we felt a little late for us to say, hey, we're gonna be closed Friday this week. So, since we didn't catch that last year when we were setting holidays.
Is that Friday the 15th? Is that Good Friday?
Yeah, that corresponds with Good Friday.
Well, I'm quite sure the majority of the council won't agree with me, but January 3rd is very significant. That's your mayor's birthdays.
The day before is more important, though.
Because?
My birthday.
Any questions regarding this holiday schedule, council? I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the recommended holiday schedule for the city of Halsted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2022 holiday schedule for the city of Halsted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. And that passes. Next item on our agenda is, we do have one executive session scheduled this evening, and I would entertain that motion to enter into it now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council resuss into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss performance of a city employee and maintain privacy rights pursuant to the personal matters of non-elected personnel, exception KSA 754319B1. And ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and the city attorney. The open meeting in governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 7:38 PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We'll move to. We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we'll move on on our agenda. And the next section is the report section, and we'll start with the governing body, and tonight I'll start with you, Denise.
I just want to say it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve with both Ed and Sam in the last three and a half years, or four and a half years, I think now. And so I wish you luck. I don't know what you're going to do with the extra time now.
Get a job to make up for the lost income.
Oh, I know. But I'm sure you'll enjoy spending more time with Brenda and being able to get out of town and out of state, but I wish you well, and thank you for your service and your time.
Thank you. Sam?
Well, I can say just thank you for the opportunity. Enjoyed working with most of you. It's been a great experience.
And I would also like to say that it's been a pleasure to work with both of you. We all look at issues from different perspectives, and as long as I've been on here, I've always been able to learn from the other fellow council members to look at issues from different perspectives, and you've all allowed me to learn to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Edward?
Well, it's been an honor. It's been a privilege to be in this position for I don't even know how many years. Three, three mayors now, and I say honor and privilege, it hasn't always been easy. We've made some, had some tough decisions that we've had to work through. Some of them weren't pretty, some of them weren't fun, but we also made a lot of progress. And I'd like to give a special thanks to Ethan for making this governing body a better governing body through the education, training, and leadership that he's provided all of us.
I guess my final words regarding this would be, it has been a pleasure to serve with both of you guys, and definitely served with Ed the longest, shared a council seat beside him for four and a half years, and to commemorate that tonight, I wear my Hawaiian shirt. So did a few other council members. Evidently, Ed didn't get the memo.
That's cute.
I, I agree with everybody's sentiment, and Ethan has done a better job of pulling us together and making us a better council, so his reward tonight is he can now deliver his manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to Ed and Sam, thank you. I've enjoyed both of you on the council and your perspective and getting to know you better, and just thank you for your time. It's not, not an easy job, and you guys really made my job easier, and I think we're always supportive of the staff, so on their behalf, thank you for your service. We did, did have gifts to present to you all. They are stuck in shipping limbo, so.
Off the coast in California.
I think so, I think so. Our, our new city clerk was in charge of that.
That's an initiation.
How quickly.
So, thank you. That's the biggest thing. Most of you already knew, sent out via email, but Julie Waits accepted the position as city clerk, so she is official today, so very happy that she took the position and is stepping up and know she'll do a great job. So we'll have some transition periods still as we get the, some hiring done in the administrative office, but look forward to that. The only other real update I have, other than we're all busily and frantically working on year-end things, is we do have a walk-through this week on 204 Main, so hopefully we will get finalized timelines on anything that's not done. At this point, my last conversation with Tim, I believe it's kind of just that back door and getting that made, so sounds like hopefully that he has a, has a due date on that finally from his guy, his door guy, so I will share all that with you via email. While this is your last official meeting, just remember you're all technically on the hook until, until January 9th, so just again, thanks everyone. Hope everyone had a, had a good holiday, and we'll see you in the new year.
Any questions for that report? I would then entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to...
Adjourn.
Second.
$10 worth.
What's in that coffee cup?
She's a little, little choked up. We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, council.